Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 17th regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Last week's meeting was postponed due to Columbus Day, which is why we are meeting today. The Board did meet in executive session, which we're just breaking up with now, to meet on a legal matter, as well as a real estate matter. So, thank you for your patience. And, Mr. Secretary, if you will please take the roll call.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Here.
McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Holmes? He is here. He's in the back room. Mr. McGarrett?
Here.
Mr. Wexley?
Here.
Mr. O'Leary?
Here.
And Mr. Con.
Here. Prior to benediction, I will ask that Commissioner D'Amelio please approach the podium.
You want to do the...
No. Prior to benediction. Go ahead. We are going to include this in the benediction.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have some really sad news to report to this Board and the residents of Haverford Township, and that is the passing of former Commissioner Mary March of the First Ward. Mary passed away on Friday afternoon, September 30th, and I got to know Mary almost as soon as I moved into my neighborhood. And she was...I remember her being very kind and always trying to help those that weren't as fortunate as her. Amy Commissioner, and I think 1999, Jimmy?
Yeah.
And Jimmy, if you can come up too and say a few words about Mary, because you knew her better than me. But, you know, she was very active in her church at St. Pius, and she worked with Pastor Father Kelly and others, donating her time to various fundraising and charitable activities, especially for the financing and construction of the new community center, as well as other capital improvements for the school, church, and property. There were other organizations that Mary got involved in and just donated a lot of time and some of her own funding. It's a very sad time, but I'll let Jimmy say a few words for that.
That's one thing I'd like to say about Mary. Several years ago, we had a very controversial issue in the township, and it was in the First Ward. In fact, you've been Commissioner 12 years, so we're talking probably 14, 15 years ago. And it was the Berger property, the eye doctor over on Westchester Pike. And that was a very controversial issue with people coming here and sort of threats being made, and it was...the atmosphere was very hostile. And I'll never forget, Dr. Berger had spent almost a quarter of a million dollars in this fight, and he said to Mary and I in the back room, he said, "Listen, I'm just going to drop this whole thing because it's not right that this is happening to you two, and I've involved you and all." And I said to him, "Dr. Berger, I'm a big boy. I can handle what they're saying out there." And Mary said, "Jimmy's right. We can handle what's going on out there." And to be honest with you, they used to follow Mary home because she was the Commissioner of the Ward where this was happening, and all those type of things. But Mary was a fighter, I'll tell you, and she didn't let it bother her, and she...I hate to...well, I'm happy to say to the people who didn't like Mary or I, hey, we won, and we won with Mary's leadership. So, that's one that goes down in the books for Mary March. But she did a lot of other things in this township that were good for the residents, especially the residents of the First Ward. She might still be here if Steve hadn't have...if she didn't move to Florida, and Steve would have maybe had to take a backseat. But Mary was very grateful that she was Commissioner here, and she hated to leave, but it was time for her to move on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Just one other thing I remembered, that Mary was instrumental in the deal with Haverford State Hospital. I think Mary, you yourself, Ken Richardson, I think purchased at the time the property. So, Mary was big and started all these committees, and she headed up a lot of the committees for Haverford State and worked closely with Tim on that. And two of her next-door neighbors here, I appreciate Mr. and Mrs. Howe being here this evening, they were very close to Mary, obviously, having lived next door to them. But you knew of Mary's generosity and heart, and it was huge. So, we thank you, Mary, for everything you did for this township and its residents.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. And if we could please have the Reverend Pastor Timothy Johansson for benediction and including.
Please stand.
Let us pray. At first, we thank you for your servant, Mary, for the ways that she served this township, the First Ward, for all that she did for our police, for what is now the Haverford Reserve. We pray for her husband, Mel, as he copes with this loss. And we now pause for a moment of silent prayer, as we do so. Lord, we also pray for our Commissioners. Let your Spirit move in them, that they may govern justly and continue to care for the people of this township and beyond. We pray for the opioid crisis that is plaguing this township and so many others around us. We pray that you would move in our hearts and help us to remove the stigma around addiction, to recognize it as an illness, and to care for those suffering from it, rather than cast them out. And we pray for all of our faith communities. We thank you for the work of David Stipathune, who is moving to Arkansas with his family after years of serving at Lannard Presbyterian Church. And God, we pray for all of us here, for all those public servants that serve without glory. We pray for our police, for our volunteer firefighters. We pray for hunger programs and food pantries around our township, serving the 1,700-plus people living in poverty in our township. God, help us to help those who cannot help themselves. Bless us with every good thing, that we may be a blessing to others. And we pray in your most holy name. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your understanding, for our opening of the meeting. We have a couple proclamations here, and really, the first up, again, is Temple Lutheran Church. So, if the congregation or representative from the congregations are here, you're more than welcome to please come up and...
You look handsome right there. Don't worry about it. Okay. Back in the turn of the century, the 19th century, the 20th century, the Haverford Township was a lot different than what it is today. When you got around the township, it was mostly farms, and when you went around the township, you know what? You either rode a horse, or you rode a bike, or you walked. Not many people had cars back in the early 1900s. For those that did, well, they lived in the upper end of the township. So, and in the winter times, you used a sled to get around, but things changed. Haverford Township started to develop in the early 1900s as well. And it got to the point where the community, the Brookline community, the Benfield community, they needed a place to call their own, to go to worship and to reflect in their belief. And along came, well, the Union Methodist Church and Temple Lutheran congregations that were together prior to the 1916, but when they did get together, they started...they organized actually September 10th. In 1919, they built the...they started the dedication of the building behind them, the Bible School. Then they purchased in the 1922, they purchased the property next door, two lots next door, to build the parsonage. In '28, they built the Gothic-style church that you see today. During the Second World War, they had 127 of their members that served during the war. And they added a great carillon bell system, carillon bell system to the towers, beautiful bells to the towers, that were dedicated to our veterans, of all veterans of the armed forces. And later on, they actually updated it with that tape system, what have you, that was real modern, back there in the 60s. The programs that they had, the kindergartens, the nursery schools, all through the years that they developed, whatever the community needed, that's the direction they went in. Their first and foremost was to pass on the Word of God. And then, by doing so, through their acts of kindness, the reach-out programs that the pastor talked about, they had the hunger programs, they had foreign ministry that they did, it just went on and on. They even had an Adopt a Highway program. That was great. You still have the program, or...what have you? But let me tell you, what a spectacular congregation that you have. We're very fortunate to have you in Haverford Township for your 100 years, and the best in another 100 years. I'll read this proclamation. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, takes great pleasure in recognizing one of Haverford Township's places of spiritual worship. And whereas Commissioners and residents of Haverford Township wish to congratulate Temple Lutheran Church, Brookline Boulevard, Havertown, PA, on celebrating their 100th anniversary milestone. And there's a lot of "whereas's" in proclamations. And whereas September 10th, 1916, marks the organization of Temple Lutheran Church, Brookline, County of Delaware, with 30 charter members, and adopted a constitution. Brookline Union's Sunday School was established in 1913 and met on what is now Arlington Road. Members of this Sunday School formed the basis of two churches, both of which started in 1916, Temple Lutheran Church and Brookline Methodist Church. Whereas the first worship service was held on October 14th, 1916, the property on the corner of Arlington Road and Brookline Boulevard was purchased in June 1910. The first school building was dedicated in September 1920. Temple celebrates its rich heritage of faith and ministry in this community and looks forward to serving this community in the years to come. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford extend to Pastor Timothy Johansson and all the congregation continued best wishes and special thank you for serving the spiritual needs of the community, promoting justice, and reaching out to those less fortunate. Proclaimed when we first served, the 17th day of October, modern time, 2016, the Township of Haverford and all the Boards, the Board of Commissioners. Thank you very, very much.
And they all hit me. I was probably there in 1913 when this church opened up. But, you know, actually, back in the 60s, I know the pastor now doesn't remember all this, but in the 60s, before the four homes that were built there, they had that lot, and they had a...actually, they had a big Boy Scout group there at Temple Lutheran, and they used to sell Christmas trees on the corner there. But actually, I ended up, I inherited a tractor. I wasn't very lucky, I inherited it, because my next-door neighbor across the street, Mr. Kelch, was in charge of the grounds for Temple Lutheran Church. He said, "Jimmy, you think you could help me out and cut the lawn up there?" Well, it took me more time to just walk around the whole property and pick up all the beer bottles and Coke bottles and all that. Instead, it took me a half an hour to cut the grass, but it took me an hour and a half to pick up all the stuff. So, I did that for quite a few years, and then one day, the mower broke down, and I really said, "Thank God," because the church said, "Service is no longer needed." I said, "Thank you." So, that's...but Temple Lutheran, I've lived in that neighborhood for seven years, and they just played the bells the other day. It was beautiful to hear those bells. I think it was America you were playing on there? Yeah, they had three songs on it. It was just beautiful. I thank you.
So, we're very happy to honor you for this proclamation from Haverford Township. Here's Sue Cook, many years, same with the town.
Yeah, she worked in the health department, many years, Sue Cook, right here.
D'Amelio, along with the Police Committee, if you would please come to the front. Jimmy was probably around 100 years ago bothering the other chief. Well, I'm proud to present this proclamation. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, take great pleasure in recognizing the men and women who protect and serve the residents and visitors of the Haverford community. And whereas the Board of Commissioners and the residents of Haverford Township wish to congratulate the Haverford Township Police Force in celebrating their 100th anniversary milestone. And whereas the Board of Commissioners established a Night Watch and Police Force when in session on Monday, June 5th, 1916, when Ordinance Number 77 of 1916 passed and did ordain the Night Watch and Police Force, that would consist of the one police chief and not more than nine policemen, one of whom may be appointed to position of Sergeant of Police. And whereas, Ordinance Number 77 of 1916, outlined the duties of said officers as such, policemen shall patrol their respective beats during all of the time they are on duty and shall be governed in making arrests of all drunken, disorderly, and suspicious persons by the laws of this Commonwealth and by the ordinances and regulations of the township. And whereas, over these past 100 years of police force, of this police force, the population of the Haverford community has grown from 6,000 residents to near 50,000 residents, and in keeping true, said police force has increased its complement of sevenfold, by sevenfold, along with adding new services and modernizing others. And whereas, when in session on Monday, May 9th, 2016, the Board of Commissioners, recognizing their duty to both police and community, passed and did ordain the authorization to demolish the original police station, construct a multi-use police station, administration building, to be completed by end of 2017. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford extend their sincere gratitude to the Haverford Township Police Force. Haverford's finest, on a job well done, and over the next 100 years, Godspeed.
Deputy Chief, do you want to say anything?
I'd like to thank the Board...
Do not give McGarrett the mic.
I would like to thank the Board for their support over the 100 years of that we've been in existence, and we definitely love the support of the community. If it wasn't for your support, we wouldn't be as successful as we are. But we truly, in this time, in what's going on around the world, around the country, we really appreciate the support of the community. Thank you.
Just want to say that that police station that they talked about in 1913 is the one that we're taking down now. There hasn't been any others. They made improvements over the years, but somebody said, "I don't really think we need any improvements with the police station. It's fine the way it is." Well, I don't think there's a police officer down there that would agree with that statement. So, I just wanted to make that clear. That's what we're doing. That's...it was about time. We got our money's worth out of it.
Thank you very much, Commissioner McGarrett. Commissioner Holmes, don't we have some special guests in the audience tonight as well?
We do. In the back, I don't know if any of them will be speaking, but Archbishop Carroll has sent representatives of its AP Government Class to watch government in action tonight, so...
Got to have a speaker.
Please stick around to the very end, I promise. You won't be disappointed, but it's already been a good meeting.
Welcome Archbishop Carroll.
And I'm going to make you do this. Each one of you, please stand up and introduce yourselves, and we'll repeat your name for the mics, starting with you, Marielle.
Marielle Conwell.
Marielle Conwell.
Samantha Hagan.
Madigan Gallagher.
Madigan Gallagher.
Bridget Yule.
Bridget Yule.
Jess Suloff.
Jess Suloff.
Grace Ewing.
Tristan Wainwright.
Tristan Wainwright. Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you very much for coming. Moving right along, number three, tonight we also have with us is Sueden Cordis, from the Delaware County Recycling Manager and Coordinator of the Solid Waste Authority. If I could also ask Steve Sinabaldi, our Assistant Public Works Director, Bob Steelman, the Sanitation Supervisor, and Gloria Cuccini, our Executive Secretary, please come up and be recognized. Mr. Jen...
He's multitasking.
Oh, he's...okay.
He's going to be there for a while.
Thank you all. I'm here today to represent not only Delaware County, but an organization that I'm affiliated with, which is the Professional Recyclers of Pennsylvania. And they are acknowledging the good works that are being done here in Haverford Township. The award that I'm presenting tonight is for outstanding commitment to recycling, waste reduction, and reuse. And I guess some of you are not quite as aware of all the good works that Haverford Township is doing, because you've lived here, you've spent much of your time here. But Haverford Township is pretty unique in Delaware County. They do a lot of things and go above and beyond. It's not just your curbside recycling. They have...the LEAF program that they have is amazing. They join me in my hazardous waste program. We're having an event this coming Saturday in Sharon Hill, and I can tell you, I've been doing this for 19 years now, when I survey the people that come to my events, where did you come from? Haverford is always number one. You're very environmentally conscious here. You know how to recycle. You know where the things go. In 2014, my electronic events came to an abrupt halt with the passage of Act 108 of 2010. Some state representatives thought that it should be done a different way. We've been doing it since 2003 very successfully, but they had a different slant on it. It now prohibits me from having events. So, what did Haverford do? They stepped up. They work with Newtown and Marple, and you hold collectively an event for your residents, and you can dispose of your TVs, your computers, anything with accord. It's amazing. The things under Larry's direction, and Gloria, and Steve, and Bob, I mean, you all work together. It's an effort that is not...I wish every township was like this one. It would be so easy. You do a great job. Larry does a great job. The website that you have, the cable channel, I mean, all of this are things that some municipalities don't have one, let alone everything that you have here, the newsletters. You're promoting recycling. And while this award is not nearly as fancy as the ones that you handed out tonight, it really does mean a lot. And congratulations.
It's all recycled paper.
It is.
And I would like to say that, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, thank you very much for all the effort that you put...Gloria, you take care of the correspondence, you set the things up, coordinate it all the time. Steve, you come up with some great ideas a lot of times, you know, thinking outside the recycling box, and as the Assistant Township Manager...
You're township manager, ho! I was going to say, they're Larry's ideas, and we cringe when he comes up with them, but they always work.
Yeah, they're powerful. So, and Bob, thanks for cracking the whip and what have you. And thank you very much for recognizing the great works.
You really do a great job here.
The only...I remember at the one recycling event that we had, the only complaint I heard from people was, it wasn't long enough. It was so well-used...
Right.
That it was, I think the police department was out there directing traffic onto Westchester Pike and Mailham Road, that combined effort. Then that's...so, if we're allowed to go a little longer, I don't know. Is that...it was still...I think it was...
You had three hours.
Three hours, yeah. And they really...
We usually had six when we had them. And, you know, we would get 2,000 cars.
It's such a great program. Thank you very, very much for everything. Larry?
You know, I just wanted to...Sue, thank you very much, and Sue doesn't get enough credit, because she works very closely with Gloria. And as you know, just this year, we were, you know, successful in getting some substantial grants, and Sue is always working very closely, and she's instrumental in helping the township be success, and we do appreciate everything that you do for us. So, thank you again.
See you later. Okay, number four on the list is a presentation by the Environmental Advisory Committee, EAC. Who is representing Peter Poglieneese?
Yeah, I think they asked for us to table if they're going to...
Okay, we can do that. Number five, HPD.
Yeah, I just want to give a little bit of an update. We want to move the, you know, the update, we're going to be, we're going to bring the HPD in with us to give an update. But I just want to...you can start to see some of the stuff that we've been working on with the HPD. If you go to Westchester Pike and Minnoah Road, you can see some of the new planters out there with higher high grass and things like that. They really look nice. So, that's part, the beginning part of what we're working with the HPD, and you'll start to see that throughout the township as the New Year starts. So, that's all I got.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Item number six is the crime update. Deputy Chief, Joseph Hagan.
During the month of September, we had 167 parking tickets, 176 traffic citations, 233 rent warnings. There was a robbery at the MNT Bank on West Chester Pike. There were burglaries that occurred in Halford College Dorm Room on Colfax, Halford Road, Ralston, 2400 Block of Hurst, another one on 2400 Block of Hurst, and then on Rodman Avenue during the daytime. There was attempted burglaries on Sunny Hill overnight, 1600 Block of Robinson, 1600 Block of Robinson, separate occurrence, and then Ralston on an unsecured door overnight. There were thefts from vehicles in the area, South Eagle, Twin Oaks, 2300 Block of Belvedere, Huntington Lane, and Patton Drive. Items were taken in from all those cars. We had an attempted theft from a vehicle on Maple and Hispanic. Two suspects were arrested. And then we had six, or I'm sorry, four K-9 users during the month of September. We had nothing found.
Thank you very much, Deputy Chief. And Mr. Zlatnik, on the auditor update, please.
Good evening. I reviewed the dispersments for the period commencing September 13th, 2016, and ending October 17th. I asked five questions. All five of my questions were answered to my satisfaction by the township's finance director. Therefore, in my opinion, there are no irregularities. Note, one of the questions that I raised this month was the review and approval process for the invoices for the municipal building construction. And I was told by our township's finance director that the process is as follows. The invoices are first submitted to the contract manager, Reynolds Building Solutions, for review, and then submitted to the architect, ACBA architects, for approval. They, in turn, submit the invoices to our township's community director and our, the Assistant Township Manager, Lori Hanlon-Widdow, for her approval. And I am comfortable with that process. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary.
Item number eight is Citizens Forum. Here we have guest speakers who signed up for registered. And then we also have agenda items. We're going to do the registered speakers first, and that will be Dr. Levin.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm going to give this to Larry Gentili for distribution to the members. Most of you, as guests, also have copies and have read them. You're aware that the citizens, that I do not represent the entire citizen body, but represent my own views, which are usually in line with what the Commissioners have proposed. Because of certain problems in the neighborhood this summer concerning rodents, I put together something about two rodents that were not on the list. One of them is the eastern gray squirrel. Eastern gray squirrels are rather interesting. They have two mating periods, late winter and late spring. They can produce quite a number of offspring, several of them at a time. About half of them survive. They create certain problems as adults, and they have certain benefits. First of all, by scattering nuts around and burying them, they encourage the growth of forest and spread the trees, which will form it in the future. In suburban areas, on the other hand, concentrations of gray squirrels will produce quite a problem in both lawns, which have been dug and are lumpy. Second, they prune the trees. They can't get to, if they have to get to the branches themselves, they get to the tips of the branches and cut them off, drop the acorns, as well as the buds. They feed on the buds in the spring if the winters are cold. Fortunately, we don't have any colder winters anymore because we're becoming subtropical, as you probably are entirely aware. So, as a result, people began feeding the birds. And when they feed the birds, they're doing something that produces more food for them. So, the squirrel population condenses in that area, and as a result, problems occur. If you've ever had squirrels in your house, for example, with the doors shut, you will know exactly that there is nothing like a squirrel that is hell on legs. They eat the mullions right out of the windows and make an attempt to get out of the house. Second, they get into the attic space of the house and the crawl spaces between floors. And the result is that if you're living inside the house, you hear noises all night, and you wonder where it's coming from. The second group of animals that I want to briefly touch on are the eastern chipmunks. I've seen more of them recently. They are also attracted to bird feeders. They're attracted to smaller seeds. You can tell them because they stay close to the buildings, and they literally squirt around them so rapidly that you hardly have a chance to see them. But, they have another factor which is important. Resident squirrels will build two nests in a tree. One of them, when they build two nests, they build two nests because if one gets inquested, they can move over to the other. Chipmunks, on the other hand, don't live in trees, although they can climb. They live underground. And in some cases, chipmunk burrows that were known to be 30 feet long. They're close to the foundations of homes. They allow drainage into the properties. And if you've ever had a problem with chipmunks under a house, you will know that it's real costly. Now, just to accent the fact that this is not only your problem, but it's my problem too. You can note at the bottom, when I filed this away, I didn't file it away under the title, but I said, "It's my problem too." Okay? And this is because people do not respect the ability to keep weed off the lawns, off the grounds of the house. It can create a real problem. Finally, I have a couple of questions for the Commissioners. The questions are these. Would you like to find them? The questions are these. As a limited protection, 20 mil canap around the Mr. Storage site that tops the sewer fund site was violated. I see it's dug up and in tatters at this point. What agency is fixing it, or is it being fixed? Is the pump retreat facility that removes some sort of contamination at the sewer fund site, and is run by DEPs that's still operating? Second question, why has Havreford stated that there are no public meetings on the Havreford Southern Housing Development on polluted land, as well as where else the trails path? It's really not a path. It's a road. There are no covered facilities on that road. Apparently, under consideration was, well, we'll put trails into the homes, which are paved. I think that's not exactly a great idea. You're creating a path like there, which could be a crime-ridden path. Is no significant expertise really an answer to the fact that citizens must accept in order to answer their questions, as well as a reason for a lack of planning? And there is a calling, lack of planning related to that site. Thank you very much.
That's a lot of information, Doctor. That's nuts.
Very good. Moving on.
Okay. As far as the, as far as the first question goes, pardon me? You know what? I guess we do have the agenda. I'm sorry about that. I was going to answer him. And all right, what we'll do is we'll take people from the audience on agenda items. And there is three minutes when you come up to express yourself on any agenda item. On this side of the room, second row.
Yeah, he's right here.
Third row.
Bruce Woodruff, 408 Lanark, Havre Town. Mario, nice to meet you.
How you doing?
I have a question about number 13 regarding the parking on Lanark Avenue from West Langhorn to Rodman. There's no trucks. Recently, there was construction on my end of Lanark, where there was a box truck that sat there for several months, never moved. And parking's limited on Lanark. So, I guess I'm curious as to why this wasn't extended to the entire length of Lanark, not just from where it's noted, from Langhorn to Rodman.
Yeah, no. Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We'll take everybody's questions, and then we'll address them at the end.
Okay.
Can I have your name again, please?
Bruce Woodruff.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else in the same row? Front row on this side of the room? Second row? The third row? Fourth row? Ladies, nothing? No?
I think they may be governed.
Okay.
It doesn't mean we can't call on them.
That is correct. Mr. Oliva, do you want to address that first?
Yeah, sure. We can put the restriction on that block of Lanark. There was already a restriction there. What we were doing was modifying that restriction. The trucks, what was happening is, we were having trucks, you know, like everybody's regular pickup truck, were getting ticketed. So, we wanted to raise the GVW to 8,000 in that area because there's a lot of people who, you know, there's a lot of workers, people who have pickup trucks in that area. And so, we lifted the restriction to 8,000. We didn't change any of the restrictions. We just lifted that one that's already in place. If you need one at 400 block, we'd be glad to do that.
There's, you want him to come up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
Not a problem.
Until there is.
Just to expound, as you know, there's only parking on one side of the street.
Right.
So, it's limited to the end with it.
Right.
Okay? And if we allow these trucks to sit in front of the residents, you know, like I said, I know I contacted you about this big box truck that sat there for-
Yep.
-over two months. And it sat there, and sat there, and sat there.
Yeah, and we did ticket that, and he moved it down the street.
Right. And the point is, it sat there until somebody came along, ticketed it, and then he finally decided, okay, finally, I'll move it. So, you know.
All right, we'll take care of it. I can talk to you over the-
That's fine.
Okay? I'll take care of it.
Thank you very much. Dr. Levin, Mrs. Widdow, Assistant Township Manager, if you would please address the, Mr. Dr. Levin's question.
With respect to the Havreford Superfund Site, the cap that was installed, but EPA was not breached. There was work being done beyond the cap for the installation of stormwater facilities and connection of public utilities for the Mr. Storage Building. When they started excavating, they found some additional contamination. They were required, they were required to remove it under the supervision of folks from DEP. It was, there was a new cap placed, a new permeable, permeable cap placed. The connection was made to the stormwater facility, so it capped the areas of any contaminated soils. There was improvements placed above it and backfilled. And that's what's going on. There was no breach of that cap for any of the work. This was in front of the cap. But there was some additional contaminated soils found.
Okay. Thank you very much. As far as the public meetings go, the township did try to put together a public meeting in the very beginning, if you remember, with the, our state representative. As far as ongoing public meetings, I will meet with the township staff, the township manager, to see if it warrants some ongoing public meetings. And I think that addresses-
Does Timmy want to talk on the trail that Dr. Levin brought up?
Okay. Mr. Denny, Assistant Township Manager in Recreation.
As I understand it, Dr. Levin's question was about conversations?
This one?
No. The iPad, is that yours?
Oh, yeah.
We did not, I think that conversations were made, and Chris, that was something that was an immediate asset, especially regarding the cost that would be involved. On the trail, definitely, the location of where it is.
Well, I'm glad we dragged him up for that.
Thanks, Tim. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much. That concludes Citizens Forum. And we will now move on to item number nine, Approval of the Minutes. Mr. D'Amelio?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 12th, 2016, and a special meeting minutes of September 27th, 2016.
Second? Second by Commissioner Oliva. Discussion. There being none, take the roll. Mr. D'Amelio? Yes. Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell? Yes. Item number 10, Approval of the Warrants. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number 10 of 2016 totaling $7,579,374.52, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for September 8th of 2016 in the amount of $598,166.92. The general sewer fund payroll for September 22nd, 2016 in the amount of $640,639.41. The general sewer fund payroll for October 6th, 2016 in the amount of $621,982.80. The general fund dispersments, number 10 of 2016, in the amount of $241,000, I'm sorry, general fund dispersments, in the amount of $2,918,785.90. The sewer fund dispersments, number 10 of 2016, in the amount of $241,141.27. Community Development Block Grant Fund Disbursement, number 10 of 2016, in the amount of $160,927.79. The Home Grant Fund, number 10 of 2016, in the amount of $1,453.25. Capital Project Fund Disbursement, number 10, in the amount of $1,605,992.84. Scheduled debt service payments for the Series 2013 General Obligation Bonds due on 10/15 of 2016, $410,591.26. The Series 2014 General Obligation Bonds due on 10/15, 2016, $375,683.75. And finally, a credit card statement ending September 27 of 2016 in the amount of $4,009.33.
Second?
Second by Mr. McGarvey.
Mr. President, our township auditor has been through these warrants. Any questions that have come to him during that examination have been raised with the appropriate personnel at the township and have been answered to his satisfaction. He has recommended these warrants be approved, and I accept his recommendation and recommend to the board that we so approve.
Any further? That being satisfied, take the roll, please. Mr. D'Amelio? Yes. Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell. Yes, Mr. Wexler, item number 11, agreeing with Norbert Ambulances and Mainline Health.
Yes, as you recall, over the last couple of years, we've decided to negotiate a contract with Norbert Ambulances. In addition to that, what was left off is there's also a separate agreement that I'm going to also include in my motion for the Township Manager for the second agreement with Mainline Health for sponsorship and medical command type of functions in addition to, and training as other things. So I make a motion to authorize the Township Manager to enter into a two-year emergency medical services agreement with Norbert Ambulances, taking effect of midnight, October 31, 2016, and to also enter in an agreement with Mainline Health for sponsorship of our medical services group.
Second?
Second by Mr. McGarrett. Questions? There being none, take the roll, please. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell. Yes, item number 12 is ordinance on fences and retaining walls. This is a first reading. Mr. Chairman, who approached the board? Mr. D'Amelio?
Make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-12, 2016, amending and supplementing ordinance number 1960, known as the general laws of the Township of Haverford, adopted June 30, 1986, further amending and supplementing Chapter 122 zoning by revising the provisions of Sections 106 and 727 regarding fences and retaining walls.
Second? Second by Mr. Siegel. Discussion?
Yeah, Chris, can, is there any chance in this ordinance that the setback be set back a little further than just right on the property line?
Is that already there, Lori? Mrs. Woodop?
It should be five feet, right?
We allow fences to be erected along a property line, and one of the reasons that we try to discourage setbacks is because if both adjoining neighbors set their fences back a foot or two from a property line, you have a no man's land that doesn't get properly maintained. Everyone will mow up to their fence and not go beyond it, especially if there's only a foot. I mean, it makes it very difficult to maintain.
I imagine you're also running to issues of adverse possession if one person builds a setback and the other person doesn't, and that person does cut the grass and does, you know, maybe put some of their kids' toys on that property after 20 years, they could claim they own it.
I suppose, open, notorious, and...
But what are you doing in case when somebody puts the fence right along the drive of the next door neighbors and then the neighbor that has the drive and pulls their car in there and has a hard time just getting the door open?
That's where they have to check the property line itself?
The property, I mean, if we have some questions about the ownership of a property, the code provides that the zoning officer can require the submission of a land survey. But there's nothing in the code, and I don't know that this board is empowered to authorize someone to use someone else's property to get in and out of their driveway. I mean, new developments, we now require a two-foot setback from the property line for a driveway just for that instance, when someone tries to open their door, that they're not stepping off of their property into someone else's property. Now, if this is in a shared drive, if this is just a driveway that's very close to a property line...
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah. It might be a situation where the person would have to have the property surveyed.
The person getting the fence?
The person installing the fence.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, there's just a typo, I think, at the end of this ordinance where you attest by Larry Gentile, says acting Township Manager. So I don't think he's acting, so...
He's an act every day.
Oh, did you, Larry?
We've actually been kicking around this ordinance since '07, yeah, so. It's like the ninth version of this.
We'll strike a line through that.
He was acting at one point.
At the time of inception, he was the acting manager.
Maybe that was during contract negotiations.
Is there any further discussion on this first reading?
No.
There being none, Mr. Secretary, please take the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell. No. Item number 13, traffic, second reading, Mr. Aliva. Is that you? Well, it's actually in the second, the first, and the fourth.
Okay. Motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-20, 2016, establishing traffic restrictions on the following highway. A modification, parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times on Lanark Avenue. West from Langhorne Avenue to Rodman Avenue. Two, parking of trucks in excess of 8,000 pounds, trailers, semi-trailers, or other commercial vehicles is prohibited at any time upon any designated highway or parts, therefore, except as provided in subsection 175-28A. Special purpose parking in front of 320 Glengarry Drive, Haverford, PA. I figured it was in Haverford. Established parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times to include the east side of Woodley Road from West Hillcrash to a point 60 feet north.
Second by?
The second. I'll second. Mr. Aliva, on the modification where we refer to commercial vehicles, are we still dealing with a definition that says any vehicle with writing on it is a commercial vehicle?
No.
And is that a, that's something we've talked about before in the past. I don't know whether we're going to make a change township-wide.
It would have to be township-wide if you're going to do that. If you're changing the definition, this is, this is the way it's written now.
Right, and my question to you is, is it your intention, since you're the one who's eased the restriction in this, in this neighborhood, from no parking at all to parking of anybody except for these specific vehicles?
No, 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 not parking at all. There's parking on the street. There's no truck parking on the street. The signs now read no truck parking on the seat. It doesn't prohibit parking at all. That's incorrect.
Okay, that's fine, and we can say, that's just our agenda, so that doesn't matter as long as the ordinance is written correctly. My question is, is it your intention to prohibit, as well as trucks over 8,000 pounds? Is commercial vehicles included in the 8,000-pound restriction there, or is it commercial vehicles as defined in our, in our ordinances, which are not limited in weight, but are any vehicle with writing on them at all?
I believe the way this is written is it is any vehicle 8,000 pounds or above, so whether it has writing on it or not.
It's not my question. Right now, this ordinance, as written, is going to prohibit trucks in excess of 8,000 pounds. It's one of the things that's prohibited. Also, trailers, semi-trailers, or other commercial vehicles. Commercial vehicles are defined in our ordinances as any car. It could be a Volkswagen Beetle. If it has a commercial sign or writing on it that advertises a business, if it says Kelly Girl, if it says anything on it, it is a commercial vehicle as defined in the code. Do you intend to prohibit those?
Go ahead.
I think I know where you're going. Might I suggest an amendment that it would be to the parking of trucks?
Yeah, trailers.
Trailers, semi-trailers, or other commercial vehicles in excess of 8,000 pounds.
All in excess of 8,000 pounds, yeah.
Which accomplishes what you want, I believe.
Correct, correct. It's just...
So we just move that and then you get the result.
We will modify it to read as Commissioner Siegel.
And I do not think that affects a first versus second reading change because it is your understanding, and we're simply changing the language to indicate what has been your understanding and our understanding all along.
Correct.
Correct, I agree.
Mario, is this, is this not written correctly? It says the modification's going from parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times.
It should be parking of all trucks.
Parking of all trucks, okay.
All trucks, yes. That is incorrect.
But that's just the agenda. I don't think there's a mistake in the ordinance.
The ordinance is correct, except for that, the change we made on the...
Right, except for the change we just recommended.
Thank you.
This is already, this is the second reading of it. We're going to create another ordinance to do your street, okay? That's the way it has to be done, I'm sorry. I can't add that, can't modify this because this is a second reading.
Okay, Mr. Wexler, you're okay?
That's fine, I accept that, too.
Okay.
I do, I, yeah, I was the second, so I do, too.
You were the second on that.
Oh, he was the second.
I'm fine with this language, but just as, while we're on the subject, do we still have a committee that's talking about this or looking into this for a township-wide ordinance?
Well, that's an ordinance, the ordinance committee?
Is that still, I mean, I think at one point that was being looked at, right?
It was being looked at, but then that fell by the wayside.
Okay.
Talked about it, but then it didn't seem that there was a consensus of the board or of residents, so it didn't seem prudent to sort of move forward since some of the issues are neighborhood by neighborhood.
Correct. Which is what we're doing here.
Do you wish to take that any further?
No, I just wanted to know where we were with that, and then maybe I'll have comments on it later, but I just wanted to know where we were.
All right, thank you very much.
It will grow to a critical issue eventually as we, as it gets harder and harder to park any 8,000-pound truck in this township.
All right, with those changes in place, and everyone with the understanding, Mr. Secretary, would you please take the roll? Certainly, Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell. Yes, number 14 is also a second reading and on pension and benefits. Mr. Wexler, you're the insurance and pension.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance P-21-2016, amending Chapter 30, pensions and employee benefits to reflect changes regarding the police pension plan negotiated as part of the current collective bargaining agreement.
Second? By Mr. Siegel, was that you?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Mr. D'Amelio? Okay, comments? There being none, take the roll. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell. Yes, number 15, Mr. Wexler, there's also a pension and benefits.
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P-22, 2016, amending Chapter 30, pensions and employment benefit as it pertains to employer and employee contributions to the civilian-defined contribution plan.
Second?
Second by Mr. D'Amelio, comments? Any discussion? There being none, take the roll, please. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell. Yes, item number 16 is a traffic ordinance in the fifth and two in the eighth. Mr. Lewis, would you please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-23-2016, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Stop intersection established on Blakely Road at the intersection of Tunbridge Road. Parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times amended to read Farwood Road, east side, 90 feet, 90 feet south of East Manoa Road. Establish Brookview Lane, west side, 65 feet north of Strathmore Road by 558 Strathmore Road.
Second?
Second by Mr. Siegel. Any discussion? To the one on Farwood Road, that's to accommodate the school bus. They cannot make the turn off of Manoa Road. There being no additional, please take the roll, Mr. Secretary. Mr. D'Amelio?
He stepped out for a moment.
Sorry. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell. Yes, number 17 is a minor subdivision in the ninth.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2030-2016, approving the preliminary slash final minor subdivision plan for the Galco Group LLC, the applicant, for the property located at 1234 Dill Road, Haverford Township, Delaware County, and known as DC Folio Number Has been submitted to permit the subdivision of the existing 22,697.29 square foot lot to create two lots as follows. Lot number one, 11,200 square feet. Lot number two, 11,497.36 square feet. The subject property is owned R4, low-medium residential, is located in the ninth ward. The aforementioned plans were prepared by Tanya Engineering Associates, Milmon Park, dated July 14, 2016, and last revised September 21, 2016, subject to the recommendations of the planning commission.
Second?
Second by Mr. McGarrett.
This, for those that don't know, is, there's an existing house, I call it the Parks Residence, which was a beautiful brick house. It was, it's been purchased by this group. It sits on a large lot, very deep and wide, wide enough for two homes. There's nothing we can do to prevent this. They'll, they'll tear down the existing house and build two houses in the same lot. It's by right. The planning commission has put some restrictions on there, and I'm glad to see that they've also put the restriction on to start putting sidewalks on that street as well, so that those first two homes on that side will be the first two with sidewalks down that side.
Any additional?
Very minor thing that the square footage does not add up, and the property now is very slightly larger when you add the two numbers together. It's .07 square feet larger, but I don't know why it would increase. We've seen it decrease in the past when there was subdivision. I've never seen it increase.
Lori?
Mrs. Kirk is also with, Mrs. Woodop, for those out in the audience.
Incorrect on their plan, so that's something that I'll have to go back and double-check with them. But it may be, it may be a good question that I'd have to look into. I just, I don't know. It's something that I have to double-check with their engineer or our engineers and see where the extra square footage is going to come. I'll go back to you.
At the risk of being accused of being an elitist again, .07 square feet is approximately the size of a $1 bill.
I understand. Still incorrect.
An elitist.
Is that an old-dollar bill or a new-dollar bill?
You don't carry anymore?
Somebody rounded off, I think, isn't it?
May I make a suggestion to modify the resolution to say approximately for the lot areas for lots one and two? Because it feels, it feels to me like that's probably where the...
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to say approximately.
Are these two reading things, or these just weren't work wants?
This is once, it's a resolution. Once the resolution.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, good idea.
All right, Mr. Wexler?
I...
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes, second.
Okay. There being nothing additional with that added language? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
It's an approximate yes. Okay, number 18 on the construction manager agreement, Mr. Wexler.
Motion to authorize library to enter in a construction manager agreement with Reynolds Building Solutions owner and to fund the agreement with library funds.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Aliva, discussion?
Mr. President, I move we table the construction manager agreement.
Mr. Holmes moves to make a recommendation to table and is seconded by Mr. Siegel. Okay. Do you want the motion to table, please?
Certainly, Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes, to table.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes, to table.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, item number 18 has been tabled till further notice. Item number 19, let's see, the continuation of citizens' forum. Again, this is on a, actually, it's, I guess, for anything. So, I'm going to start with this side of the room. Anybody, first row, second row, third row, fourth row. On this side of the room, the last row.
I recently wrote my commissioner asking a question regarding our recent political visitor, and I asked the question how much of township resources were spent for this event, and when can we expect reimbursement?
Thank you very much. Next row up, first row.
What concerns one of the agenda, I'd like to know what was modified concerning materials for fences and retaining walls from the old ordinance.
Thank you very much. Okay, there being nothing additional, let's see. Excuse me.
Well, I can handle the expenses, and then as far as the reimbursement.
Okay, so the question then there goes that there was a presidential candidate, Secretary Clinton visited Haverford Township up at the Crick, and the question is then, what expenses did the township incur, and will there be reimbursement?
There, the expenses, I won't be able to give you what the actual cost was because there's, there was no additional overtime. So, it would have been the, I would have to do the formula to get you what the expenses were that day. So, we didn't bring additional staff, there was no additional personnel brought in for that event. So, it would be handled as no differently than any other event that we would have in Haverford Township if, if there was a VIP count. I believe that Mr. Denny, his and his staff did submit the invoice, and it would be anywhere from 30 to 90 days before we're reimbursed, before we would send out a second invoice.
No, there's no expenses.
I have no idea. I would have to figure out what the expenditure, are you talking about what the expense was, what we charged for the hall?
Just to be clear, Larry, I mean, we charged her to rent the space, make that clear. We didn't, we didn't give that to her gratis.
No taxpayer funds. Mr. Gentile?
I'm not sure if this is the question, gentlemen, as to the, for the rental of the facility?
We need two podiums. The new building one.
As far as the Community Recreation Environmental Center, those are the expenses that I can speak to. We treated this as a private rental, the same as we would any other private rental, so it was, I don't have exact numbers, but it was approximately about $4,500 rental that we charged them for the event. Everything else, I think, as Larry said, was all in the course of the regular days of activity, so I don't think there was any additional township expenses.
There was no.
There were no taxpayer expenses, other than our normal expenses.
Correct, and I just like to add that this, we treated this just as we would anything else. If a private person would come in and rent the hall, that's the charge that they would get, and the additional security that was provided was provided by the Secret Service, not by the township. So, there was no...
I heard it was a terrific event with great questions from the commissioners, I don't know if anybody else heard that.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes had a great question at the event.
So, at the end of the day, the township made money on the event, just to be clear.
Yes, it did.
The township did not spend money on the event, the township made money on the event, just, just so we're all clear on that. It's also the highest rental the Crick has ever had.
This is true.
Mrs. Woodhills, in reference to Dr. Levin's question, the fence ordinance.
As the board knows, the ordinance was amended to provide six-foot solid fences. Previously, six-foot fences were only permitted to be solid for the first four feet. Everything above four feet was required to be 50% open. So, now, a fence on a back property line can be six-foot solid, and anything from the front yard setback, back on the sides, if you're on a lot that's at least 50 feet wide. If the lot is less than 50 feet wide, it's five-foot solid and one foot 50% open. The purpose for that, of that amendment is because the standard fences, semi-private fencing that you can get at Home Depot and Lowe's and some of the other local home improvement stores is not a true four-foot and two-foot, which is what our ordinance provided. It exceeded the four-foot, the six-foot solid portion, and the 50% open portion was less than two feet, so. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Item number 20 is new business. Any commissioners have anything under new business? Okay, there being none on other business, I just want to point out that there will not be a November 7 work session, that is the eve of Election Day, and that the preliminary budget for 2017, there will be a meeting on Monday, November 27, 7:00 PM, in this room. Mr. D'Amelio?
Well, I was not far from Commissioner Holmes when he asked this question to Madam Secretary. And I believe the question was, that Mr. Holmes asked was, if, to cut it, make it short, will Hillary Clinton bring back federal money for the municipalities, is that correct?
How does your vision of government ease the burden and cooperate with local government?
Oh, you remembered it.
Yeah. I watched it 100...
You must have YouTube'd it about 10 times.
He watched, he watched it quite a few times.
It's just a running thing right now on my computer.
Well, I don't recall, I don't remember her answer, do you? Did she say she was going to bring back federal money to the municipality?
She did, I mean, she said all the mad words.
I thought she did.
The police, schools, noted that the local, the building she was in was paid for with local money.
Well, I will hold you and Secretary Clinton to your word, because it sounds like...
I thought maybe you had that selfie together that you might have asked her to repeat the question, Commissioner, but he acts like he was barely there. I didn't get a selfie with Madam Secretary, but you did.
That was very nice of her to take my phone and take a picture with me. I thought it was.
She even gave it back without taking 35%.
Right, and although I must hand it to her, the email was white clean, she did a great job.
Bravo.
November, November 8, I almost said the 28th, like someone we know. I don't know where we go. This election is certainly, every day, and we all say this, and I've seen it in the news media, that every day they say, they think they've seen it all, and the next day, it's something new. We have young people in the audience this evening watching this local government. I, I can't imagine what they're thinking about our, and they're laughing, so that guy's a sherry. Are you guys following the presidential at all?
Yes.
You are?
Very good.
Okay, can you, some, one of you tell me what you thought so far? Be honest. One of you get up and tell me what you guys think so far, go ahead. Give a little encouragement, here you go.
State your name. I'm Maggie Gallagher. I think the election is okay, but I'm not really for either of the candidates, so, that's about all.
So, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, you watch it on the news, do you think the news media has influenced the election in any way?
I do, yes.
You do?
I think, like, it's biased.
I didn't know what to...
Wow, you picked the right one here.
I did, boy. That's like going to the casino again.
No, I'm not, no.
Do I, do I get to cross the damn Miss Gallagher?
No, I honestly just asked her, you know, well, thank you, I appreciate it. Do you know what Larry Holmes questioning you, believe me?
Gentlemen, let's give a hand to Maggie Gallagher, all right, Maggie?
That's what I'm trying to say when I was talking about the election. I urge all Americans that, you know, use your, I guess, whatever your heart's telling you. Look at your local elections, they're really critical, and most times they're more critical than your federal elections. So, there's a lot of work to do, it's going to be an interesting evening, and I only wish the best for the United States. I'm very pessimistic, though, I don't know, we'll see where we go. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McCloskey?
Sure, I just want to remind people, I brought it up at the, the last meeting on this Wednesday, October 19, at 7:30 in St. Dennis's Gym. Various local organizations, including our representatives from our police and EMS, and some people from our township, will be at what we're calling a community conversation to discuss drug addiction and heroin epidemic in the town. All are welcome to attend. Again, it's Wednesday night, October 19, 7:30 at the St. Dennis Gym, so I'd encourage anybody who has the time to attend. In all seriousness, I did want to bring up that we had a major presidential candidate in our town a month before the presidential election, and I'm not going to get into any of the politics of it, but I think it does speak well of our township, it speaks well of our residents, and it certainly speaks well of our recreation department and our facilities here in this town, that a major presidential candidate chose our facility to hold an event in a month out from the election. It was not without effort of our police and a lot of people in the township to make it happen, but the event went off very well, and I think that speaks very highly of our township and the employees, so I want to just thank them all for, for the efforts that went into that. It's also a very good thing for the township, I mean, we looked well, we were on every major network across the country, and it speaks well of our township. Mario, I also saw the planters that the HPD are working on, and I was very excited to see that, and I think they do look good, and hopefully we can get some more. And I would just reiterate what Commissioner D'Amelio said, you know, obviously, everyone has their own political views, but voting is something that is critical to our democracy, and I'd ask everyone that is old enough to vote, and hopefully everyone is registered, to exercise that right and vote your conscience, both for the presidential election, but also in, in all the local elections. So, thank you.
I got a trivia question. Who is the last presidential candidate that came into Haverford Township? Does anybody know?
Obama.
Who?
President Obama.
Obama?
I think Obama did.
He's the guy that's...
No, he never came into Haverford Township.
It's not legitimate.
Who is the last presidential candidate that came into Haverford Township?
So, before Obama, who was the last to do it?
George Washington.
Bush.
No. Bob Dole.
Bob Dole, back in the 80s.
How much did that cost, Jim?
Ah, you guys were all teeny-boppers when he came, that's all I can tell you.
And kudos to the township, because that was, was a three-days' notice, I think, was it?
Yeah, it was probably about two and a half days, but, you know, the, in all seriousness, the recreation department and Tim Denny and all his staff did an excellent job of, of putting that all together and working with the campaign to make our facility look even better than it always does.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Siegel?
Yeah, a couple things. I didn't attend that event because I was observing a religious holiday, but all I heard were glowing reports about how well the township showed itself, which doesn't surprise me. One of the other things I want to mention is that on November 16, Commissioner McCloskey and I will be holding a joint constituent meeting in this room at 7:30. That's for residents of the 3rd and 4th wards, and we'll have representatives from the township, the police, the assistant township managers, et cetera, et cetera, will be present to answer questions, et cetera. We'll put out more information about that on, in our newsletters and otherwise. The other thing, and I know this meeting sometimes looks a little informal and sometimes a little jovial, but I can remember barely when I was in the shoes of the students who were here, which was graduated high school, almost 40 years ago, and while, you know, we may take ourselves at times a little humorously, what people don't always realize is that not only is politics local, but local government has more of an impact on most people than anything else. We're responsible for everything from trash and snow, leaves, recycling, et cetera, and, you know, you hear about, and the election will have impact on lots of things nationally, but most people, if they're going to be in a court, they're going to end up where the district justice is. Those types of people, the local people are more likely to have an impact on everyone's day-to-day lives, while, you know, the president obviously has a dramatic impact on other issues, so don't forget about that, and, you know, we take our job seriously, you know, we, we meet, this board works very hard, we may not always agree, to say the least, but we fortunately, for the most part, disagree in an agreeable fashion, and we, I hope, you know, accomplish things. So, it's really important, and for people, you know, the political ads and everything else are beyond horrible and intolerable, but this election, we're not only electing a president, we are electing a US senator, we are electing the Pennsylvania Attorney General, a position that has gone through some horribly traumatic and embarrassing times, a Pennsylvania treasurer, our state representative, and other people. It is an important election, not only on the presidential ballot, but for all of the offices below that, and I can't urge people enough to look at those issues seriously. There's a ballot question about retirement age for judges that is very important and has been litigated sort of to death over its words, so you should read that carefully and make your informed decisions, and everyone should, I hope, will go out and vote on all of those offices and, and not simply focus on the one race that obviously is getting the most attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lewis?
Yeah, I would yield my time to Mr. Holmes.
I have nothing to add this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Give you a few extra minutes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Which you would take anyway.
Mr. Lewis, thank you for that. I would...
I'd have him a minute.
For our, for our friends from Archbishop Carroll, I would repeat Dan's comments, and I would, about how seriously everybody here takes this job, and in a few minutes, I will get to a comparison. But the nine people on this board, and all the men and women that I've served with in my history here in Haverford Township, are all people who take the job very seriously, take their role in government very seriously, and take their individual duties, and if they don't know something, they learn it, and if somebody can talk them out of something, they're talked out of it, and if they could be talked into something, they can be talked into it. And that's a very important trait of anybody who's going to occupy a leadership position, because at the end of the day, we are examples for people. Now, 155 years ago, one of the greatest examples in American history spoke at his first inaugural address, and so that I can put Abraham Lincoln's speech into context, understand that he was speaking to a country, nine of which, of the states that he was speaking to, had already elected an alternative president, Jefferson Davis, as the president of the Confederate States of America. They were threatening armed insurrection rebellion, which came true. He knew this would happen, his life had been threatened. He said in his last two paragraphs of his address, "In your hands, my dissatisfied fellow countrymen, and not in mine, is the momentous issue of civil war. The government will not assail you. You can have no conflict without being yourselves the aggressors. You have no oath registered in heaven to destroy the government, while I shall have the most solemn one to preserve, protect, and defend it." He went on to say, "I am loath to close, we are not enemies but friends, we must not be enemies. Though passion may have strained it, it must not break our bonds of affection. The mystic chords of memory stretching from every battlefield and patriot grave to every living heart and hearthstone all over this broad land will yet swell the chorus of the Union when again touched, as surely they will be, by the better angels of our nature." Now, we started this meeting today by pledging allegiance, and when we pledged that allegiance, we pledged allegiance to the flag, and we pledged to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Well, the 57 people who signed, the 56 people who signed the Declaration of Independence signed a document that was written by Thomas Jefferson, and Thomas Jefferson wrote, "When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands that have connected them with another, a decent respect for the opinions of mankind compels them to list the causes which compel them to such separation." They then listed, he listed 27 particular items that the king had done to, had done to the colonies. He said, "Let facts be submitted to a candid world." He listed 27 grievances, he then stated something very important. He said, "A prince whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant is unfit to be the ruler of a free people." And to support this declaration, they pledged their lives, their fortunes, and our sacred honor. is unfit to be the ruler of a free people." And to support this declaration, they pledged their lives, their fortunes, and our sacred honor. Now, it's my duty as a leader in this township to let my facts be submitted to a candid world, and I will not overdo this, I will not state twenty-seven of them, I will just say this. He has threatened to ender, end our two-hundred-forty-year tradition, the envy of all of civilized mankind, to have a peaceful transition of power, and instead has fomented resolution, revolution, insurrection, and threatening to jail his political opponent. He has denigrated the sacrifices of a Gold Star Mother and made insensitive, racist, and appallingly ignorant assumptions about her loss and about her religion. He has threatened to default on our national debt with no understanding at all of the catastrophic effect that this would have on us domestically. He has joked about the use of nuclear weapons, he has questioned the heroism of prisoners of war, he has claimed superiority over our trained military staff, all the while refusing to acknowledge his own cowardice in a time of war. He has used, in his words and in his actions, the most vile misogynistic and offensive language that you can use about half of our population. And he has called into question the existence of the single most effective military alliance in the history of international relations. We need to re-declare on November eighth, our independence from a prince whose acts are thus characterized by every act which may define a tyrant who is unfit to be the ruler of a free people. Friends and neighbors of Haverford Township, citizens of Pennsylvania, and my fellow Americans, uphold your duty to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, and do not vote for Donald Trump. That is all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McGarvey?
Well, I'm just going to say this without getting into a bigger argument, but Larry, I am going out and I am going to vote for Donald Trump, because crooked Hillary should be in jail. So I don't want to hear that stuff about how great she is. Donald Trump has made a lot of mistakes, but so has she. And I won't get into it, because I'm going to talk about the township issues and not politics. Larry can go out on his day and spend all the time in the sixth ward begging the people to vote for Hillary, and I'll do the same thing in the seventh ward, asking the people to vote for Donald Trump. So that's where we stand on that. But Haverford Township Day was another great day in Haverford Township. Well, thank you. But anyway, all the residents and that showed up, really, I was amazed, because I really thought we'd probably have about five thousand people. I think we ended up with probably nine or ten thousand, because the weather looked bad and it looked like it wasn't really going to happen. Tim Denny was worried over there, because we had the five K run, but they showed up. And, Timmy, that's been, what, twenty-two years on that, right? We've been doing that for twenty-two years, and the firemen, the police, that all showed up, that were there to be honored, and that was quite an honor that we gave them. Also, the Brookline Fire Company wants to thank everybody, because at the end of the day, I went over to get something to eat, and there was nothing left to eat. And I had asked the people earlier, please support your fire company, and obviously they did. So, on behalf of Brookline Fire Company, thank you so very much. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Wexler?
Yes, I'll just mention the election. I'm very fortunate, ninth ward, I think Steve is the same way in the first, that we have very high voter turnout. We have very good neighbors, we have good citizens that exercise their right, and I applaud them to do that. And I, my only fear is that, as was the consensus here, is that the national election's going to overshadow what some good people do at the local level. So please look at the bottom of the, of the voting machines as well, and look at the people that have done work for you lately, and please vote your conscience to do that. Second thing that I have is that the Hilltop Civic Association is sponsoring a Halloween festival, I think they call it the, Something in the Trunk, and it's going to be at the twenty-second at Bon Air Fire Company, starting around four o'clock with a parade from the church at Eagle and Steel down to Bon Air, and lots of food, chili cook-off, and trick-or-treats for the kids there. And then just the third thing is, we talked about, we honor Trinity Lutheran and the police for a hundred years. I'd also like to honor and congratulate something else for seventy-five years, that's Mr. McGarvey, celebrated his seventy-fifth birthday the other day, and so congratulations to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Oliva?
Usually I don't like to talk politics, but since we've been talking it this evening, there is one man, and he's at the local level, who I have a lot of respect for, and who, you know, it's Pat Mian. We, we had, we had issues over on Naylor's Run, where people really needed support, and all other legislators ran away from the issue, and he ran towards it, he met with everyone, and then his chief of staff worked with us, worked with Lori and myself to get this issue of their, their flood insurance taken care of. And there are, how many people now? Seventy, seventy-some homes where they're, they're not paying for flood insurance that they were being charged for, and flood insurance, flood insurance is very expensive. And in this session, we have a lot of elderly who can barely stay in this township, so three thousand, five thousand dollars a year is a lot of money. And Pat Mian was the guy who did it. So, that's all I have to say. He's a good man, and, and I just want to throw my support behind him, because he helped me when, when we needed help, he helped my residents. So, a lot of thanks to Pat. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Wexler?
Yeah, I have to apologize, I forgot about a very important event. On November the third, there will be a joint Upper Darby and Haverford Township meeting concerning PennDOT recommendations for traffic calming along Township Line. As we heard last month, there were two fatalities on September the twenty-third. Representative Jamie Santuro, Jamie Santuro, in conjunction, contacted myself and Tom McCozy, the mayor of Upper Darby. We went, we met with PennDOT and our police department, along with Upper Darby's, and asked PennDOT to, for traffic calming recommendations. They, they said it would take about a year or two to put a project together. Bottom line is, with pressure from both townships, they came up with a recommendation in two weeks. We met again with them on the sixth and got the recommendations. We asked for some tweaks. They've done that, and we're going to present that to the residents along the Township Line area for the traffic calming methods that we're going to, the state's going to improvise in there. So that's going to be November third, at seven-thirty PM, or seven PM, at St. Dorothy's School Hall on Township and Vermont Road.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. And thank you all commissioners for exercising your right to speech. Everyone has an opinion, and that's what this country is about. That's what democracy is, exercising your right. It's, it was, it's thought that, you know, the women will actually decide this vote, and, which is fine by me, but it is October, and speaking of women, it is the recognition of Breast Cancer Month. There's an estimated of over two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand new cases of breast cancer this year in the United States, and forty thousand of those women are not expected to survive. It's not just a woman situation, it's also a male matter, because there, a hundred times less than that is about four hundred, or, yeah, males who are diagnosed with a lump on their chest. My father was one of them. I have three daughters, so it's very important to me that I get checked as a man, to make sure that my chest is okay, so my three little girls are okay. The, the hope positive side of this is that there's two-point-eight million American survivors of breast cancer. That is tremendous. And in nineteen eighty-two, Nancy Brinker told her dying sister, Susan Gorm, yeah, Coman, excuse me, that she would do everything possible to try to get rid of breast cancer forever. She started the, and in that short time, she started with a two-hundred dollars in a cigar box, that, with a bunch of donors. Today, it is the largest global organization for breast cancer, and they've invested two-point-eight billion dollars, not just in research, but in community health, global outreach, and public policy initiatives. This is a very major concern in the United States, but if, I want to urge everyone out there that early detection is the most, most important thing to everyone. Ladies, thank you for coming tonight, and remember, vote often and take care of yourselves, always, and this government of the people will try to do its best to take care of you. Thank you very much for coming tonight. I want to reiterate that November twenty-first, I did say the twenty-first was the budget, preliminary budget, I hope, not the twenty-seventh. So, that being said, I will take an entertaining motion...
Pushing to adjourn.
So moved. Thank you very much.